If you can all take your seats, we're gonna go ahead and get started. As you can see, we are lighter than normal today. We have two colleagues up at the League of California Cities, so you have me. Mr. Clerk, will you please call order and call the roll, please?
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Rigby.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
And for the record, Mayor Pro Tim Lormore and Mayor Tesari are attending the League of California Cities General Assembly Conference in Sacramento.
Our invocation will be led by Pastor Tim Eaton of Edgewater Lutheran Church, who I saw at his computer today at Panera studying away. Yes.
Honorable Mayor and esteemed members of our city council and fellow citizens of our great city, we would like to bow our heads. Gracious God, we hear in Psalm 72 a prayer that the king would be endowed with justice, and we give thanks that you have given us leaders in our city who have a heart. For the people, we thank you also for those who serve in our city, both in our offices, but also our police, our firefighters, and all of those that you have blessed the city with, who are volunteers, who give their time and their effort and their care to this incredible city. We thank you that you have blessed us with economic prosperity. We thank you for new development. We thank you for new homes, and we pray that in our homes we'd also have people who experience peace for themselves. We remind those around our country who are experiencing tragedy and difficulty, and we pray that you would prepare us that if those things were ever come upon us, that the laws within our communities would help us to be of love and service to one another. We pray this in great hope.
Thank you, Pastor Eaton. Will you please rise and join me in the flag salute led by our student liaison, Oscar?
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Some housekeeping items. Restrooms are in the back. If you have a cellphone, please take a moment to put it on silence or silent or turn it off. And if you need to have a conversation, it does echo in here. You can take the conversation outside. We'll move to presentations and announcements. Item 3.1, Ms. Rodriguez. You're at least on the list, so, yeah. Okay, nevermind, sorry. The council will join me up at the front.
It's proclamation for National Preparedness Month. Disasters don't plan ahead, you can't. Declaring September 2017 National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide effort sponsored by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, ready campaign, and is designed to encourage Americans to take simple steps to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and communities. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen and each person, can take simple, few simple steps to create an emergency kit, create a family disaster plan, and stay informed, whereas the city of Eastville recognizes the need to increase public awareness concerning the importance for preparing for emergencies and to persuade individuals to take action. Now therefore, we resolve the city council of the city of Eastville on behalf of citizens and staff to hereby recognize September 2017 as National Preparedness Month. And Ms. Rodriguez heads up a lot of our preparedness and emergency preparation lines.
We will now go to our student liaison report. Oscar.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Eastville Elementary recently had a PTA night at our local Baskin Robbins, which turned out to be a successful event, just as successful as the fall fundraisers currently occurring. On Monday, September 11th, Eastville Elementary had their Patriot Assembly. Monday was the commencement of Eastville's elementary student council elections. Chess masters and arts smarts are actively, are active after school. The Performing Arts Committee have begun auditions for their talent show as well, and track conferences will be held at the end of this month. Clare Barn Elementary are currently having their What If Week from September 11th to September 15th, promoting kindness, the seven habits, and community building. Augustine Ramirez have had a fantastic start to the school year, currently holding 1,240 students. There is an outdoor movie night open to the community on September 15th, starting at 6:30. Augustine Ramirez will hope to, will hope everybody will join them on this fun evening. They're going old school for the movie, It Will Be Back to the Future. There is no school for students on Friday, September 29th. Teachers from River Heights, Corona Fundamental, and Norco Intermediate will join Ramirez staff to learn from a guest speaker on creative positive environments for students on each campus. Mark your calendars for November 6th. This is a day for the game of the century where Ramirez Intermediate basketball teams will fight for Eastville's school trophies against High River Heights Intermediate. This game will be at the Roosevelt Gym, girls' game at 4:00 PM, and the boys' game will be at 5:00. Eleanor Roosevelt, Eleanor Roosevelt Link Crew and ASB have finished their volunteering for SLC Student Learning Center assemblies, providing freshmen with very useful information for their high school career. As well as Norco, Norco Community College has also attempted, has also teamed up with Eleanor Roosevelt, bringing great opportunities for students such as English 1A classes, business, math after school. Thank you. I'll be now happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for public comments. Any member wishing to address the council on an item not on the agenda can speak now. Stephen, do we have any public comment cards?
Yes, we received one card from Justin D. Well.
Okay. If anybody else would like to speak, you can get a comment card, come to the podium and speak after. No, there's a mute button.
How's that? Okay.
Good.
My name is Justin. I'm Assembly Member Servontus's office, just here to provide a brief legislative update. It is nearing the end of the legislative session. Friday is when the session ends and end of year recess begins. So there's a lot moving in Sacramento. Six of Assembly Member Servontus's bills have passed both houses and are headed to the governor's desk. So some of those bills are AB 296, which would establish a women's veterans health task force within Cal Vet. AB 1200, which would establish the Agent and Disability Resource Connection Program to provide elders and veterans with information regarding long-term care. AB 226, which gives priority to the spouses of active U.S. military service members who are applying for a teaching credential. And AB 1553, which makes more small businesses eligible for funding through the California Americans with Disabilities Small Business Capital Access Loan Program. As well as AB 1618, which creates a process to certify legitimate organizations that provide veteran services and a competitive grant program for these organizations so they have access to loan funding. So all of those bills are onto the governor's desk. And end of year recess begins next week, so there's some of them going back in the history. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do you know if they've completed the vote on 649 yet?
Yes. SB 649 passed on the assembly floor today. It passed on a significant bipartisan vote with 19 Republicans supporting. And the bill, the bill will benefit our communities by providing improved data, faster data for mobile phones. It will benefit low-income families as well as businesses in our region. And the assembly member did hear the concerns brought about the bill by cities. And in the bill in its final form, it gives more control for cities to determine the aesthetics and the location of the small cells. And so for all of those reasons, Assembly Member Servontus voted aye on the bill. So yes, it did pass on the floor today.
So it's passed both houses?
That's correct.
And that was the version that was finalized when amendments were due as of last week, is that correct? Or was there any changes this week that you're aware of?
I'm not sure if there were changes this week.
Okay.
But I believe it will go back to the Senate to, for the amendments made by the assembly to be concurred and before heading to the governor's desk.
Okay. All right, thank you for your update. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay. Thank you. We'll move to our consent calendar. Are there any changes or modifications to our 6.0 items?
Yes, Councilmember Rush. Staff is requesting to pull item 6.3 and continue to the September 27th meeting.
Okay. Is there any issues with that? Continuing 6.3 to September 27th?
No.
We'll go ahead and do that on consensus, and then I'd entertain a motion for 61, 62, 64, and 65.
So moved on those items.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rigby, second by Councilmember Plot.
Yep.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
No public hearings this evening, so we will go to item 8.1, which is approval of Cal Recycle Rubberized Asphalt Grant in the amount of $151,000. Mr. Bradshaw.
Good member, good evening, members of the city council. We're applying for this grant. It's for $151,000. Just a little bit about the grant. It's primarily, it's for rubberized asphalt. The intent is to take tires out of the landfill. They grind up the rubber, and it's incorporated into the asphalt at a very high temperature, and they place it on the streets. And so it gets, it's basically recycling the tires. Very environmentally friendly. Rubberized asphalt's quieter, but it has a longer life cycle. It actually, it, there's some pros and cons, but the pros are it has much longer life cycle. It goes down much hotter than regular asphalt. It is a little bit harder to work with, but it's much better material. This grant, it was part of, I think it's Senate Bill 360 some time ago, that allocates funds to offset the cost of, the cost of the rubberized versus conventional asphalt. And the grant terms between December 2017 and April 2020. What we did is we took our capital improvement program and looked at all the projects we would be using rubberized, we could use rubberized asphalt, and it comes up to be about $151,000, ten dollars a ton that's allowed. And that puts it about on par with the cost of regular asphalt in our area. We have to also adopt what's called environmentally preferable purchasing and purchasing, looks like practices is spelled right, and practices policy needs to be adopted. The policy is attached. It talks about recycling, the use of pesticides, using green types of materials, green building practices. And it's, it's, it's really a suggestion as far as the policy's concerned. It's something we should be doing anyway. Energy conservation, it goes through a laundry list. But that has to also be adopted at the same time. This grant is due the first week in October, and the funds become available in December. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any comments, public comments on this item?
We've received none.
Okay. I have a few questions while opening up. Councilmember Rigby?
Yes, thank you. Do we have any proposed areas, specific areas thus far that we will be using this rubberized asphalt?
We have the Hamner widening that'll be used for that project. It'll, we expect that to be starting up after the first of the year. Limonite resurfacing that's occurring, will, anyway, that'll be occurring in the future as part of the capital improvement project. I believe the limits is, are from Hamner to Sumner or Harrison. I'm trying to recall. But there's a whole list. Actually, I think in the report, it lists all the projects themselves. Do we include it there? Well, we didn't include it there. Oh, I think we had included in the grant application itself. Right. But it's part of the capital improvement program for the next two and a half years, basically.
Councilmember Plot, any questions?
No. Todd had, he said he had the same questions, Todd.
Okay. Thank you. I have two questions, comments. I know that this material is used a lot in trails as a multi-use type material for running, walking, jogging, things of that nature. Is this an annual allocation, and if so, is there anything that we might be able to do maybe in future with JCSD on some of our bike and trails programs, bikeways and trails programs?
As far as resurfacing of those trails?
Are there any opportunities like that? I mean, I don't know if the Riverwalk Trail, it's the only one I could think of that has
Right.
a dual surface. I think it has an asphalt and DG, has both of them. But I was just throwing that out there because I know in my professional career, you know, we recommend it a lot for multi-use trails, things of that nature, so. But I guess if it's, if it's not an annual allocation, then it's probably no choice or no, no point. But if it's ongoing on an annual basis, it might be an opportunity for us to look into.
Right. I believe we looked through 2020, all the projects we had listed in the capital improvement program. That's something we could talk to JCSD about. Rubberized asphalt gets extremely expensive on the very small projects. You really want to be able to package it with as large a project as you can, you can have. The material actually comes from Bashplank, like 350 degrees.
Yeah.
It's really, it's very demanding to work with, and you don't want it to get away from you or you have serious problems with the placement. Roadways are the best place to use it. The trails, it may be more of a struggle just because of the width of the trails.
Does it help gas mileage at all, or is it just mostly for the environmental benefits?
I know there have been a number of studies as far as, there's several decibels quieter using rubberized asphalt. It has better friction coefficient. But typically, the standard is if you put down two inches of conventional asphalt versus four, versus two inches of rubberized asphalt, they compare the two inches of rubberized asphalt to being equivalent to a structural section of four inches of conventional asphalt. So it really has much better structural properties, and so it does last longer.
Councilmember Rush.
Yes.
I have forwarded this grant application to, not, not our application, but this grant opportunity to JCSD. Anytime we come across something that we, we feel, staff feels would be of benefit to the district, we, we send it on to them.
Good deal. And then my second question, it's a little bit off topic, but I know that a couple of years ago, there was a thought to change over for new construction and add more concrete. There was this, it was like this cool streets thing, for lack of a better term. Has that gained any traction?
Not a great deal. Goodman at the intersections are using concrete because of the sturability. Ontario has that standard.
Yeah, I think, I think they were looking at some state legislation to include the, increase the percentage of concrete in the AC pavement, but I don't know if that went anywhere.
Well, at this point, there's a pros and cons, Councilmember Rush, on the concrete intersections. Usually, that's mostly used because of the traction of the large trucks when they, when they break.
Mm-hmm.
So that's basically what is being used right now. Ontario has a policy in their, in their city. We don't have one because we don't have, maybe in the future, we have to implement one, but we are researching that. The difficulty with concrete intersection is when we have issue with utilities on the ground. Anything we have, any leak, we have to cut that, and then when we cut it, we're gonna have patches. It's very hard to patch. Yeah, exactly, sir. So there's a pros and cons on that, and it's always, depending who's promoting the concrete and asphalt, and it's always the give and take. But the concrete pavement is mostly, all the time, not mostly, I would say all the time, is higher cost than the
Yeah, yeah, I know.
It's being used on the freeways for, for longer lasting lifetime, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Now entertain a motion on item 8.1.
Make a motion to approve items 8.1, so recommended by the city staff.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you. Move to item 8.2, which is contract award for 2017 Residential Slurry Seal Project and appropriation of SB 1 funds to the FY 1718 year budget. Mr. Bradshaw is up again.
Yes. Okay, we'll jump right in as far as the project locations that have been selected. We look at our pavement management program, and then every area, we go out before the project is packaged, and we look, closely at the streets. Typically, streets will be slurry every five to seven years. Slurry, you probably know this pretty well as far as any of the resurfacing programs. It's a mixture of water, asphalt, emulsion, aggregate, and additives. And it, the idea is to seal the cracks, and the larger cracks, we actually use rubberized material to seal them. We'll go out and map the locations where there needs to be deep patch, where there are potholes. And so it really, we're rejuvenating the street to try and buy life. Also, there's a number of locations that will be striping some high visibility crosswalks as part of this project, along with the restriping all the rest of the streets after the slurry. There were actually three bids. The range was the low bid that you're seeing here. The high bid was about $2 million. There were three bidders. There's actually only five, large companies, large enough that would bid a project of this size. And we had three of those bidders, and two of those bidders elected not to bid. We feel like we had competitive bids. The low bidder goes, went to pavement coatings out of Neuriloma, and they're the lowest responsible bidder. And also, as part of this, there's an allocation of about $364,000 from the Senate Bill 1 funds that'll become available that we can use with this project. And there's a budget amendment that's also a part of this recommendation. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Any comments on this one, Mr. Clerk?
No.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Plot?
Thank you, Councilman Rush. On these high visibility crosswalks, I guess my question is, how many of these are we going to, and I guess where are we going to be locating these crosswalks?
Councilman Plot, what we are trying to do here is that any crosswalk where the safe route to school, near a school area, where we have slurry projects, we fold it into this. But now that we have a unit price, we have added, or we are thinking of adding a couple more that is critical for where the school is. The crosswalk that we have is going to be mostly yellow color. You have a picture, Craig, over there, just a ladder, ladder crosswalk. We were trying to, yeah, something like this. I know this is not where we put on Scholar and Baltimore. We may want to make some changes to that. The reason is, this is all thermal plastics, and it's kind of slippery in the rain. So what we're trying to do is that we're trying to create an open area in the middle so the kids who with bicycles, they can walk in the middle. So this is recently, between five to seven years, been approved by Caltrans to be applied. So to answer your question, yes, we're gonna add crosswalk as much as we can. And actually, we're trying to make a report to the council on the next meeting on the 27th of September. Variety of traffic update, traffic projects that we have in town. But yeah, the crosswalks could be added. And just to report to council as well, as part of the slurry seal, a few months ago, staff brought up a peach blossom speeding issue. And we have looked into this. This area is part of the slurry seal project. So what staff is suggesting is, recommending is, we're gonna put dual left, I'm sorry, dual, double yellow lines on peach blossom between Scholar and 65th. And at that time, one of the discussions is to put speed bumps, speed bumps, and other things. But the council directed staff to do, like a baby step, to look at some small improvements. We want to add double yellow, double yellow line solid from end to end. And we're gonna add 25 legends on the pavement on both directions. We're also gonna add speed limit 25 miles an hour at few locations on both directions as well to remind motorists to, to slow down in the residential area. So that is, that is one of the area that we think is gonna be improving these locations as part of the slurry seal project.
Thank you, Joe. That actually was my second question, just on, on that note. So that we, that we opened the vote for next council meeting, is that correct?
Well, the next council meeting actually is going to be just providing a general report. But part of this slurry seal contract, we're going to include peach blossom strapping plan.
Okay.
Additional strapping.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other comments? Entertain a motion on item 8.2.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Rigby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Plot.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
This will take us to item 8.3, Freeway Maintenance Agreement with State DOT. Mr. Bradshaw.
Okay, with the progress, well, with the Senate Bill 1 and the trailer bill, 132, that provided the $48 million for the Limonite interchange, that we're moving quickly along to completing the design of the interchange. With that, Caltrans wants to create a freeway maintenance agreement. There is an existing freeway maintenance agreement with a county, which, which we took over when the city was incorporated. And so that, so Caltrans would like to incorporate the old county agreement in with some changes associated with the Limonite Avenue I-15 over crossing. On the I-15, there are seven locations where there, we have an undercrossing or an overcrossing within Caltrans right-of-way. For example, on the 68th Street I-15 overcrossing, we have the roadway up to the city limit line that we're, we are responsible for, for maintenance. And it's just, it's just the roadway in that case. Limonite, we'll talk about more, but the others, it's a very similar situation. Philadelphia Avenue I-15 undercrossing, Philadelphia happens to be a city limit, the center line of Philadelphia happens to be the city limit with Ontario. So we actually have 25% with the other 50% in Harupa Valley as far as maintenance responsibility. Just to show you what the attachments look like. The hashed portion is just showing our pavement responsibilities for the city of Eastville. And there's an attachment for each intersection. And since Limonite has changed, the Caltrans right-of-way has been extended somewhat on Limonite. We have a little bit different response, and the interchange is wider. We have a little bit different responsibility than what was in the old county agreement. This agreement also includes and exhibits talking very specifically about what aesthetics the city will be responsible for maintaining after the interchange has been completed. And I've got a photo, and it's really, everything's on Limonite, is new responsibilities. The exhibits C-11, 12, and 13, those are old responsibilities that came from the county agreement. I believe you've seen this a number of times, but I think it's very difficult to even see this pointer. But, but the, the shape of the fence is, is different from Caltrans standards. So that's part of the maintenance agreement. There's a detail that's included. The Eastville logo, Eastville name on the bridge, it's also a maintenance item. The pilasters on the end and kind of in the center there, those are maintenance items with a stacked rock. The landscaping you see on the right is a maintenance item. All those maintenance items are spelled out in this agreement. The total cost of all those maintenance items will be about $90,000 a year. And there's a plan view that shows the landscaping a little bit better. And that's, that's really the basis of the agreement. We're really just codifying what was originally in place with the county agreement, plus we've added the specific detail for the Limonite I-15 interchange. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments on this item?
We've received none.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding this, so this agreement is an agreement that we've adopt from, adopted from the county?
Right. Everything except for the Limonite portion, we inherited from the county when we incorporated.
Okay. I guess a question for our city attorney, just reviewing this, did you see any concerns or anything that should be addressed or should be noted on this?
No, Councilmember Rigby. We went over this together with, with Public Works, and we found it acceptable as the form.
Great, thank you. I have no other questions.
And we're only doing our side, right?
Correct.
Exactly.
I have no questions.
Entertained a motion on item eight point three.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
By Councilmember Rigby, seconded by Councilmember Plot.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you very much. That concludes our regular agenda. City manager, city staff report.
Good evening, honorable council members. I have just one quick update for you guys before I turn it over to staff. Wanted to announce that our first quarter two thousand seventeen sales tax distribution put the city of Eastville at the highest in the county. The highest percentage increase from previous year, so it was thirty-two point two percent. That is not due to just one specific reason, but it's a multitude of reasons from new tenants and other economic development efforts. So just wanted to commend the council. Hopefully, we're continuing on the correct path, and we will be distributing this through a e-notification announcement for our citizens. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe there was a copy of this in your box as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any other city staff reports?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, council. Just a few updates. As went out on the e-notification earlier this week, the community cleanup for this Saturday, September sixteenth, was canceled due to a scheduling conflict that was unforeseen. We've sent it out through our social media outlets, e-notification, posted on the website, the calendar, and Waste Management has done so as well. We have rescheduled that community cleanup event to be Saturday, September thirtieth, at Eleanor Roosevelt High School in the student parking lot as of right now, but we may change the location within the high school for the ingress and egress of traffic. I'll be working with Joe from Public Works on ensuring that that goes seamless. Did you have a question, Councilmember Plot?
You said the thirtieth?
Yes, September thirtieth, which is a Saturday, so we were able to move it close proximity to September sixteenth, but unfortunately, it just didn't work out for this weekend, so we do apologize for that. Friday, September twenty-second is Eastville Day at the L.A. County Fair, and tickets are available at City Hall, and with the promo code, we are having a few floats honoring our community hero, which was nominated by the community, Dr. Don Pedinger, so we'll be honoring him and the city of Eastville, so I encourage all of the community to attend, so we can have a good showing this year. October seventh, J C S D has informed us will be their Harvest Festival, so we have the flyers, we will be advertising that on our various social media platforms. And also, on September twenty-sixth, which is in two weeks, at our Public Safety Commission meeting at six P M. here at Rosa Parks, we will be doing an emergency preparedness presentation. I think it's a very timely occurrence with all of the occurrences going on nationally and worldwide to get the community prepared for emergencies or disasters. So we'll do a short, succinct presentation on how the community can get prepared, their families prepared and prepared at work. And we're available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have just a quick question. Are we working with law enforcement and fire for that emergency preparedness kind of presentation stuff, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, working together on that?
Absolutely. I have actually just completed the presentation this evening before coming to the council meeting tonight, so I'll be sure I email that over to, to make sure that it's vetted through them and that they're in concurrence. It is a template that we have utilized through other cities and jurisdictions from both a county level and a local government level, but making sure that we meet the needs of anything specific for Eastville, I'll ensure that it's vetted through law, fire and the city manager.
Great, thank you.
On the cleanup, I've received a few questions on the level of e-waste. I read out the flyer, man, it says computers, then there's some, some items in there that are not accepted. Batteries and these of that nature. Is it a full e-waste event? Will all e-waste, with the exception of those not accepted items, be accepted?
As far as I understand, it will be a complete, full e-waste event. TVs, computers, monitors, things of that nature. If you'd like, I can get further clarification from Waste Management on those items not accepted, so we can make that more apparent to the public.
Yeah, I think that might be. I just, I had a couple of questions. I mean, I had one that asked if they could turn in a refrigerator. I don't know. I don't know if that's e-waste or because of the freon and the coolant in it.
Yeah, there are some parameters, and based on the last two events that I, I was at, there are some parameters on what can and cannot be accepted, and I do remember that some items were, constituents were directed to landfill directly, and we were able to give them passes, so that they didn't have to pay for that, but it was not acceptable items, but I'll get clarification, make sure the community's aware.
Appreciate it.
And then on certain items like that, I think they can contact Waste Management and have it directly picked up from their home also.
Yeah.
They can have so many per year.
Yeah, I'm out of mine. You get two per year, and they, they take a lot. I think it's up to two hundred pounds in one visit, but I've seen them take more.
You are correct. They do offer two bulky item pickups per household a year, so we also did e-notification social media blast on that, so the community understands that, that, that is an available service that's offered already with our, our contract with Waste Management. So we did push that out, we may push it out again, so people are aware again that, that that's available, so.
They took a three-piece built-in desk that weighed like two hundred and twenty pounds, so it's worth it. All right, any other questions? Any other staff reports? All right, thank you. Mr. Rigby, anything to address?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. Thank you, staff, for working on helping Mr. Pedinger with preparing the, for the mulch area there. I know, I've talked to him multiple times, and he's very excited for that, so thank you for, for helping out with that. There was a, and, and he's not here this evening, but there was a games day that was put on recently by one of the Cub Scout, Boy Scout scout masters, Tom Donatoni, and I, I just wanted to, I mean publicly here, thank him for doing that. I mean, it was a great event, it was something that he spearheaded and he put together, he did the whole thing. I think all the council members, we were all there at a, at a different time, I think, and it was a great event, and I think, I'm just grateful for him doing that. Thank you for the nine eleven event. It was great, great turnout. I think it was one of our, our larger turnouts. Just a couple of quick things that I have been made aware of by residents. One is regarding the high school, and this will be brought up at our next schools meeting, but I just wanted to bring it up to law enforcement. There has been multiple complaints, at least to me, about traffic and trash in the area. And I can get you the exact streets, I forget off the top of my head, but there's a stop sign there that they said that people are continuously running as well as parking in the no parking areas there, and that's where all the trash is, is being left in that area. So I don't know if there's, if we can just put that kind of on our hot sheet of areas to, to, to look out for. We have our, our short-term rental ad hoc committee meeting. I always have to say it very slow to make sure I get it right, but we have hopefully our last meeting next week. The exact date and time to be determined, but we are working with all stakeholders, and we will have that meeting, and our plan for that meeting is to have everyone present their, their plan on what they plan to do in the future to combat the situation, and then we will basically put those plans together, and that's what we will move off of in the future, but we, we feel that there is no need to continue the ad hoc committee beyond that point. We will still stay in communication with all stakeholders regarding the situation, but we feel that everyone has done a great job, and we've seen that that has been on a, on a decrease. People have been vacating those units, as well as complaints have not been where they, they have been in the past. The last thing I wanted to bring up, it'll also be brought up at a Parks meeting. I've also, with my involvement, just in different sporting events within the city, I've also received numerous complaints about park conditions, and I just wanted to bring it up to the rest of the council, that this definitely needs to be addressed with J C S D. Park conditions, as well as roadway, public right-of-way areas that are maintained by J C S D. I've actually been contacted by an H O A that has requested to, to take on the management by themselves, because J C S D is doing such a bad job with it. So I kind of talked to them, and I said, you know, we need to meet with J C S D, and we need to discuss this first, but that's not the only person that's come to me about that. So I just wanted to make the council aware that that is an issue that I'm hearing a lot of, and I am working with staff to see what we can do to get that, so that we can meet together with J C S D and make sure that everyone's taking care of our, our responsibilities. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Plot.
Yeah, just on the Eastville Parks Commission, Todd handled that pretty well, so I have nothing on that, but on, in regards to R T A, I have a Transportation Now meeting tomorrow, which I will report back at the next council meeting, and then the R T A meeting will be next after that, so I'll report, report both those at the next meeting. The second thing is, I have a, so there's been an opening for the Public Safety Commissioner spot. I'll be meeting, there's been five applicants, and I'll be interviewing all five applicants tomorrow, and should have an appointee at the, at the next council meeting as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. I do have just a quick question for city manager. Is there any, any upcoming information or anything that we need to be aware of with, anything regarding to J C S D?
And do you have, in relation specifically?
In regards to street lighting?
We are attempting to get a, another joint workshop with the J C S D Board of Directors on the Eastville City Council. I had made that request to J C S D General Manager, Todd Corbin, and I've received a response today that, that does not look like having that meeting before our next city council meeting is viable. They have some, some conflicts with various board members, so I will be speaking with him tomorrow to find an alternative date, hopefully in early October.
Thank you.
And one other update to, to just bring to the council's attention, and forgive me if, if you have covered this, that, that J C S D has armed security patrolling the parks now at off hours, off, off hours from their dedicated Parks Deputy.
I wonder if that was, I know we had brought that up at the last, or two Parks Commission meetings ago, where we were talking about adding another deputy instead of the one, I wonder if this is in response to that?
Just for clarification, I'm not sure, because that was never brought to the Parks Committee.
Yeah, no, it wasn't. Interesting. We'll have something to talk about.
The nine eleven ceremony was great. Good job by staff. By bringing my kids, actually got there early this year, and thanks to the chamber for providing breakfast. Just to bring everyone up to speed on a, a R C T C transportation-related issue, and kudos to our Commissioner, Josh Lee, for bringing this to our attention. We've been struggling with the commission, which implements part of the C T C allocation for the A T P, and a lot of acronyms, and, and competing unsuccessfully for some funding that seems to always go to a certain select number of cities and select number of projects. So anyways, that being said, we had a commission today, I spoke with the executive director, and I already updated staff. There's going, the, the commission can allocate an additional ten points, which for us probably would have made the difference based upon certain criteria, and that, that criterion is, is set forth by commission policy, and it's a whole bunch of different laundry lists of things. Well, our, our complaints, I guess, have kind of re-initiated an effort to relook at that criteria, which hopefully will prove helpful for us in the future, so. Has to go through a process, the planning director, excuse me, the Public Works Director, city manager's tack, and then to, then to the full commission, and there's probably going to be a lot of pushback, because it would mean that certain cities don't get their annual allocation, mostly with disadvantaged communities and things of that nature. Not saying that's not a, a good thing, but we should be able to spread the wealth as much as possible, so. That conversation is starting, I don't anticipate anything soon, but I'll keep everyone up to speed, so. Any other comments?
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rush and councilmembers in general, I wanted to also let you know, the city was just awarded a defibrillator, thanks to the efforts of Aleah Rodriguez that filled out all the paperwork, so that was free. That's a very expensive piece of equipment, and if I'm not mistaken, you are already trained on how to administer that, so there will be some additional training for the rest of us at City Hall that are not familiar with that piece of equipment and some installation, but want to thank Aleah for taking the time and effort and chasing that down, and so we will have one at City Hall.
Is, are those the A E Ds?
Yes, sir.
Good job. I've used one before.
Oh.
Kind of crazy how it happens. Very smart, smart devices.
Yeah, they're very user-friendly.
Yeah, pretty easy, especially when it's never, has no idea, and then all of a sudden you just grab it and you have to use it on somebody, it's pretty interesting.
So when the developers get their bills, we have.
I hope not.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned to six thirty, September twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.